Good afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. We'll call the City Council meeting for the city of New Ulm to order. Item number one, consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 2.1, report from city engineer regarding the 2023 MSAS improvement project.
Thank you, Madam President, City Counselors. Just a short report today on the proposed 2023 MSAS improvement project. This project will consist of two separate locations, the first being North Highland Avenue from Oak Street to Highway 14, and that would be a mill and overlay of the existing roadway pavement, and North Broadway from 20th North Street to Casat 13. Originally, that project was going to be a mill and overlay as well, but after some geotechnical review, it's going to be recommended that we do a full-depth reclamation on that project. And what that involves is grinding the existing bituminous surface and combining that with the roadway subgrade gravel. There'll be a stabilizing agent added at that time as it's being mixed, and then roadway will be graded and then paved over. There's been advances with that technology, and I feel that's a good roadway segment to try this on. It's a very renewable type of construction. Everything's recycled in place, and we're excited to give that a shot. So as far as the report is concerned, section one gives a brief project description and summary of preliminary estimated cost. Section two of the report talks about funding sources and projected bonding need. We have received some small urban grant funding for both projects, and that dedicated funding amount with that federal grant is $946,203, and will offset the remaining balance with state aid funds for this project. Section three goes through the criteria and the for selecting roadway improvements. And as you can see within the report, we have an average OCI of 65 on North Highland Avenue, but it is as low as 50. And that OCI rating is on a scale from zero to 100, with 100 being a brand-new pavement. And North Broadway has an average of 21, but has segments as low as 11. Section four talks about the city's complete streets policy and how we implement that with our construction projects. This project was reviewed by the Safety Commission at their October 7th meeting, and they did recommend their approval as the project for the project meeting the complete streets policy. Further on, within the report, we discussed the necessity, cost-effectiveness, and feasibility, and we feel that this project meets all of these requirements. There will be some special benefit, which is talked about in section six, and those amounts aren't determined at this time, but the North Highland Avenue section will not be assessed, but North Broadway, there will be assessments, and we will calculate them prior to public hearings and the normal project procedure. And then finally, within the last exhibit within the report is just photos showing project locations. So at this time, that's the report. If you have any questions about the projects or anything like that, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Stodheim.
I've only informed Joe about my complaint with North Highland being up in my ward, the complaints of all the manhole cover areas being filled in with tar and the bumps, and it's gotten a lot of complaints, including from me. So I wish this was in '22, not in '23, but I'll try and hang in there. So I like that there's no assessments there. Not hearing anything else, I'll adopt acknowledged, receiving the proposed 2023 MSAS improvement project engineering report.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 2.2, pedestrian crossing flag pilot program.
Madam President, City Counselors, this will be presented by Sam Gat, the New Ulm Safe Routes to School Coordinator.
Thank you. So I'll be presenting on behalf of our Safe Routes to School team in New Ulm, and we would like to implement a pedestrian crossing flag program, being that because of the volume at traffic sometimes, at particular intersections, it can make crossing it challenging, where a pedestrian might have to wait several minutes before being able to cross. And one solution that has been implemented in other communities is using a pedestrian crossing flag system. And so the way that that works is just at one side of the intersection, you have a bucket. We'll be making ours out of PVC that has a decal with instructions on how to use it, and then flags. So the pedestrian can simply take the flag, hold that out in front of them, alerting the drivers of their intention to cross, and then they can cross the roadway with another bucket to place the flag on the other side. One community that we were looking at that has implemented this is in South St. Paul, where they installed, I think, five of them at different intersections, and it was a real big hit. A lot of the parents really appreciated that and would maybe even then allow their kids to walk to school, which is a big plus. And they've been asking for more of them, too. So it really just increases the visibility for those pedestrians and gets drivers to stop for them so they can cross. With the intersections we have planned, the Center and Highland intersection, there is not corresponding posts or stop signs to attach buckets to, so we are requesting some city assistance to put in a post so that we can mount the bucket at that Center and Highland intersection. And then we are looking at this being kind of a pilot program, doing three intersections at Center and Highland, Fourth South and Broadway, as well as the mid-block crossing on Garden, and if it goes well, maybe plans to expand it in the future.
Madam President, City Counselors, a couple of things to add. This was presented to the Safety Commission at their October 7th meeting, and they recommended approval of this pilot program. Also, I had discussions with the Brown County Highway Committee this morning, and they expressed their support in trying this pilot program at Center and Highland, as Center Street is a county highway. And then also, at Fourth South and Broadway, MINDOT is in support of trying this pilot project as well. MINDOT expressed their desire to assist with installing posts as needed also.
Thank you.
When do you want to start this project, if we approve this tonight?
As soon as we can purchase the materials, so.
Still yet, this school year?
Yeah.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I really like the fact that it's kind of a local way to resolve a safety issue in our community, and I think it's a great concept. I'd like to see us try it.
And you said you're applying for a grant for it as well?
Well, we, the Safe Routes to School team is applying for boost grants, and it was talked about that we could have this as one of our budget items, but this is really low cost, so we do have funding besides the grant. So we actually won't be waiting for that grant, because that's not till January, and we'd rather get started with it with our own funds right away.
Sam, I must have hung out with a shifty group of people that my first thought goes to stealing the flags. In your talking with other towns, did that come up as an issue?
Yeah. Talking with South St. Paul, they haven't run into that issue. If you, Salt Lake City, Utah, I know they did this at a much bigger scale, and they spent thousands of dollars replacing flags. We won't really know until we give it a shot, I guess, but I'm hopeful that the flags will stay put, and yeah.
Optimistic, Mayor.
Yes, positive.
Must have been the shifty friends they grew up with.
Just don't make the flags too cool. You can't buy nice flags, and don't make them cool.
Yeah, with, just I guess, hearing the support from the state, from the county, I support this as well, so I'll make a motion to approve the pedestrian crossing flag pilot program and authorize the city crews to assist in the installation of the posts for mounting the hardware needed to conduct the program.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
The only thing I think I would like to have is have you come back in six months and tell us how it's going.
Sure.
I would love to hear that also.
End of the school year, maybe, or whenever you think it's appropriate. We appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'm excited to try that and to see these going into use in the community. I would love to explore in the future some options for taking this a step further with lighted crosswalks and things like that. I know that those come with extra expenses, but I do see those in other communities, and we have a lot of parks and a lot of kids walking to school, so I'm for it. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Item number 2.3, a simple lot division for Lot 7, Block 123, north of Center Street.
Madam President, members of the City Council, Dave Schonberg, Community Development Director. The Planning Commission, at its October 28th meeting unanimously recommended approval of this request with conditions. The applicant is Jason Peterson. The street address of the property is 711 20th North Street. The property location is in the vicinity of North Park, and it's east of North Washington Street and north of 19th North Street. Lot 7 is a partial lot. The reason it's partial is that the remainder of, or portion of that lot has been incorporated into the adjoining highway right-of-way. The zoning designation of the property is B2, which means that there are no lot area requirements in that particular zoning district. Current site use is, that's the location of Peterson Truck and Trailer Sales. The proposed legal descriptions would be the southwest 15 feet of Lot 7, Block 123, north of Center Street. And then the second description would be Lot 7, Block 123, north of Center Street, except the southwest 15 feet. The simple lot division would allow the property owner to create two larger parcels of property, and one of which would be available for development purposes. There were two conditions. The first is that the applicant will record the resolution authorizing the simple lot division with the Brown County Recorder's Office, and that it would be effective with that action. And then, secondly, that the applicant will comply with the required B2 sideyard setback requirements, which is 10 feet, if the adjoining parcel B is sold. This would require the relocation of any structures or equipment currently in the setback area. If the property is not sold, then any structures or equipment must be relocated outside of the setback area or must be placed across the property line. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Schonberg.
I don't have anything more to add from the Planning Commission's meeting. Dave covered it pretty cut and dry here. This is, so I'll look at adding a motion to recommend approval with conditions, a simple lot division of the property legally described as Lot 7, Block 123, north of Center Street.
You meant a resolution, right?
Motion?
Resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution? Okay, I'm sorry.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
There's one question I got to ask David. Okay, there are two vacated alleys, so that second parcel they're creating now, that would have to come off the right-of, state right-of-way?
No.
Maybe I'm missing something there. The vacated alley right-of-ways?
So the vacated alley right-of-way just is incorporated into the adjoining lots. And the two parcels that the owner is proposing to create incorporate some of that alley lot area into the one parcel.
All right. Question answered.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion is carried. Thank you. Item number 3.1, 9/11 commemorative coin presentation. Hello.
I'm Greg from the Veterans Service Office. I guess we'll just have Andy come up here. In recognition of the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks and the subsequent global war on terrorism, the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs has created a commemorative coin as an expression of appreciation of Minnesota veterans who served since that time. I want to tell you a few things about Andy Ackman, obviously your employee here, and I got all of this from, all of this from your military discharge, and hopefully all of it's correct. You know, we can, we can all look around this room and think, yep, everybody knows where they were on that Tuesday morning, 9/11, even Andy. My guess is you were a junior in high school. I'm thinking you were seventeen, you're New Year's baby of 1984, Andy is. Joined the Army at age 23 and trained as an intelligence analyst, deployed out of Fort Campbell, I'm guessing, March of 2008, to that distant landlocked, mountainous country called Afghanistan. The new landscape, which presented great challenges to intelligence planners and tactical operators who overcame numerous obstacles to protect, who overcame numerous obstacles to project power halfway across the globe. Andy Ackman was right there in the middle of the war, fulfilling his mission to receive, interpret, and relay sensitive information about the opposing force for the sole purpose that the American fighters would someday find and eliminate Osama bin Laden and his Al Qaeda, Taliban terrorists. Andy spent an entire year inside the war zone, working in the harshest of conditions and sleeping in the crappiest of places, so that we in America could travel freely and sleep soundly under our electric blankets, only to awaken, experience yet another day of peace on our soil. For his service, Andy was awarded the Afghanistan Campaign Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Medal, an Army Commendation Medal, the Army Achievement Medal, Army Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, the NATO Medal, the Combat Action Badge, and the Driver and Mechanic Badge. I also wanted to point out that the Combat Action Badge is a United States military award given to soldiers of the US Army of any rank who are not members of an infantry or special forces unit. So he was not a trigger puller, but yet he performed satisfactorily in accordance with the prescribed rules of engagement in the combat zone. After Andy left the Army, he continued to serve with the Minnesota National Guard. Out in the hallway, I told someone that I was in the Darfur Lounge on Saturday with some motorcycle riders from town, and they said they had seen our picture in the paper, and I said, well, Andy Ackman's going to get a coin next Tuesday. He said, I know him. He's the SRO for our school. And he said, I didn't know Andy was in the, was in the Army, and he's real proud to know that now. So on behalf of a grateful state, and a grateful county, and a grateful city, I present you with this medallion expressing our sincere appreciation for your service.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
I just want to say thank you for this. It's an honor. Again, I was proud to serve my country, you know, some of, I met some of the greatest people I've ever known, through some of the greatest times and through some of the worst times that I've ever experienced. And, you know, through it all, I've had my family supporting me and my community and stuff, and I appreciate the city allowing me to, you know, appreciate the city, you know, I'm coming back home, you know, where I was born and raised, and was able to get a nice job here. And as you said, now I'm the school resource officer here for the city and trying to contribute as best as I can. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, too, for bringing this to our city, so. There you go. Anybody from the community or in Brown County, anybody who lives in Brown County can contact you at the Veterans Office and get their own coin. Awesome.
Thank you. Item number 4.1, 2021 appointment of the City Council.
Second, wait a minute, I can cover it, Roger. So the city attorney's office would like to appoint Holly L. Hankins as an Assistant City Attorney, and this would be subject to Charter Section 64.
Way of background, Holly joined our office, she just was sworn in last Friday, so she's a new attorney. We would really like to get her going to assist with some of the criminal prosecution work. I think she's going to be an excellent addition to our office and to the city, so.
She's in our local office, not the Mankato office.
Right, she's going to be in New Ulm.
With that being said, I'll motion to approve the 2021 appointment of the City Council of Holly L. Hankins as Assistant City Attorney per Charter Section 64.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Item number 4.2, airport maintenance and operation grant.
Madam President, City Counselors, this is a, just a normal agreement for operations at the airport. The state reimburses the city for three-quarters of our eligible routine airport maintenance, and due to COVID and multiple MINDOT staffers not working within the office and working from home, that got delayed a little bit. Usually, they have this out in spring or early summer, but this will run through June of 2022, or, sorry, 2023, for the state fiscal years 2022 and 2023.
Thank you.
Nobody else has anything? I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the Minnesota MINDOT Office of Aeronautics Grant Contract Number 1047494, Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant Contract between the City of New Ulm and the State of Minnesota for a two-year period commencing July 1, 2021, terminating June 30, 2023. Authorize the city manager and finance director to execute the agreement for and on behalf of the city in New Ulm.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion is carried. Item number 4.4, ordinance number 2021-047, fifth series, first consideration for zoning. Oh, sorry, 4.3, sorry. Ordinance number 2021-046, fifth series, first consideration for schedule of fees.
Madam President, I note that the preliminary word in the proposed action is waive the first consideration. I don't think you'd be waiving it. You're just considering it for the first time, pursuant to the current charter provisions, so.
Thank you.
We're going to talk a bit about the fees that you recommended an increase on for next year, the ones that are.
I can, yeah.
Then I have a couple of questions, of course.
So this goes out to all the department heads, and they each look at the fees that affect their individual departments. The ones that saw changes in the admin department, the assessment certificate went up from $40 to $45, and that otherwise has been $40 since 2009. Then looking at the gambling premise admin fee, we actually reduced that from $40 to $25, just because there's very little that we have to do in regards to that action. And then the cemetery did increase a few of their fees. Those were all approved by the Cemetery Commission, so there were some increases there for the grave openings. And then the interim use permit increased, or no, it's not increased, got added to the schedule. It hadn't been on the schedule since we had created that permit process. The conditional use permit application increased from $150 to $175. Had not been increased since 2017. The zoning certification letter was increased from $45 to $50, and the plat filing fee was increased from $150 to $175. Both of those had not been touched since 2016. The simple lot division increased from $150 to $175, and the variance increased from $150 to $175, and that had not been changed since 2017. The last one on the city fee schedule that changed was fingerprinting, went from $12 to $20, and that hadn't been changed since 2014. So that came from the police department. The library fees and the park and rec fees that are attached. The library fees and the park and rec fees that are attached were all approved by their respective boards and commissions. Most of the park and rec fees were approved in May of twenty twenty-one, and those didn't, most of those did not change going into the new year.
All right, the couple of questions that I have, first is on page one. When was the last time that we looked at the tobacco fees? I notice some cities are dramatically increasing them. One is a way to maybe stop smoking to some degree, I guess, I don't know, or having some places maybe not selling tobacco. And I'm just curious if, if we've looked at that. Who, who looks at that category?
That category goes to the PD, I believe, along with the Police Department.
Police Department looks at that? Okay.
And they didn't direct any changes this year.
Does anybody have any knowledge of when we last looked at that?
I don't have it open to see the history, otherwise I have the whole history here somewhere.
We can, we can come back to it, and I noticed that the recommendation for next year is to leave the daycare fee at zero, so I strongly support that. That's the one right underneath that one on page one. If you go to page two, a question I have is when we charge for the sidewalk snow removal, we're charging a fifty-dollar administrative fee plus the, the contract shoveling cost. But then you go down to the, unless I'm reading it wrong, on the mowing fee, we charge a two hundred and sixty-five dollar administrative fee plus contract costs. And I'm just wondering if that shouldn't be a little bit more equal there? Or maybe there's a reason, and I don't know.
Both administered by two separate departments. The snow removal notices are done by engineering and inspections upstairs.
Yeah.
And the weed and snow removal is done by the street department.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Why there's such a huge difference?
Yeah, I mean, they're, what they should be doing is pulling their time that's involved, and that's where we're coming up with the fees.
And I was trying to think if there's more work in one area than the other, but it seemed, I don't know. So that.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you where they.
And then my last one, and I know our City Manager won't be happy when I bring this up, but I'm not happy with those dog fees. And I brought this up before. We have a hundred and twenty-eight dogs, or something like that with a license. We know we have thousands of dogs. Why we keep charging this fee when nobody follows it anyway? And probably the only people that are getting their license are city employees, are those people directly involved with the city. I just, if we're only getting five percent or less complying with an ordinance or a fee, why we keep charging it? And I, I have a problem with that. So I, those are the comments that I wanted to, to bring up. And I don't know if there's an answer here tonight, or if we pull them for staff to take a second look at those particular areas, or we just, if there's no support and the rest of you want to continue to pass it, I'm fine with that, too. But I wanted to bring them up.
Because I can address the, the dog license. So with the dog license fee, what we're doing this year is actually advertising for residents to get their dog license in January. And if we don't see an increase with advertising through that, then recommend removing it for twenty-three and just eliminating moving forward. Because again, most residents don't know they have to, so if we just advertise.
Yeah, they don't know they have to, so it's not that they're not disregarding it. They just don't know.
Yeah, so if we advertise and we see an increase in January, then we know the advertising is working. If we advertise and still nothing, then take a look at.
And there has been some local cities in our region that are dumping these fees because they're, they're not bringing in anything anyway, and nobody's following it or they don't know it, and.
Yep. Yeah, so it is something that if, if in January, it's just still the same thing, then in twenty-three, we will, we will be looking at eliminating it from the fee schedule.
I know if earlier this year, we discussed this, this dogs, and we even discussed whether to go to a two or three-year license potentially, or, you know, give the license, but then if we, you're caught, well, then, you know, you have to have someone to enforce it, and then it would be a stricter, you know, fine.
One aspect, Madam President, Counselors, and Chief Borkert isn't here to address it, but for purposes of enforcing animal control, you know, we have a situation where, granted, many members of the public are not following the code, and I think the answer is to make sure that they do follow the code. Because when stray dogs are found, when there's a possible attack by a dog, we need to know who the owner is, and that's, of course, why the license is required. So there's absolutely a public reason to have it.
But we only have a hundred and twenty dogs licensed.
That's not being enforced. It's not being informed or enforced. That's the problem.
I know. Yeah, I agree with that. And I, I talked with the former animal control officer who said, what do you think about this? And he, his recommendation was to keep it, too, but it's like, man, this doesn't seem like, ah, on the big picture, it's.
What are other communities doing? Have we researched anything, what other communities are doing? Or do they actually go out and check?
Remember the city that just dumped, was it Sleepy Eye?
Sleepy Eye just did, and it's a fifty-fifty across the board. Some cities have kept it, others have gotten rid of it, but then some of the ones that have gotten rid of it have required owners to get the chip. So again, that's.
Yeah, someone requiring chips, but not a license.
Yeah, so it's, it's a cost to the owner one way or another, and we can look at those. But, you know, again, without active marketing, I think, let's try active marketing, see what it, if we can get more people to come in, maybe that's just getting the information out there. I know when the Chamber President moved into town, he literally was like, what is this letter? Got a letter from us saying, hey, you need to register your dog. So just getting that information out there will hopefully increase, and then we'll have some actual data on whether the marketing actually works or not.
Do you have any signage posted at our current dog park within our community, or do they self-police that, or is there a requirement?
There isn't a requirement, but signs have been made and will be placed out there.
And I will just add, I did talk to Counselor in Mankato, and they don't have a dog license per se, but they just have a dangerous dog registration program where you have to, like, pay a fee for that. That's just what they do over there. That's bigger, but.
What are Counselors' thoughts on the tobacco license or the snow?
Tobacco has been a hundred and fifty dollars since two thousand and twelve.
Nine years.
What is the alcohol license? That, that varies based on what types, right, and when? Okay. And that can get pretty.
There's a larger process involved in increasing.
Yeah, so.
And how many businesses have the tobacco license? Do you have a guesstimate?
There's not very many.
Really?
The grocery stores, the gas stations.
Couple bars, probably.
Yeah.
A tobacco shop, I assume. Two tobacco shops. I know a number of years ago, when we had that Hannah Christiansen here from the tobacco, you know, she was speaking on American Lung Association, said that, you know, we could put a limit on how many licenses, you know, we talked about it at that time, but we didn't do anything on fees either for deterring. But I know I've been reading about other communities that are putting limits on how many licenses, you know, to limit the places for purchase of tobacco and things of that nature, but.
So can, do we have enough time where we could pull this for staff, take a quick look at it, and bring back a recommendation at the next meeting? To pull that one?
We could pull that one and bring it back later, but with this, with the timing with the fee schedule, is that it needs to be, the second reading needs to be done at the end of November, so that we can have it published and effective January one. We need that thirty-day from the publishing before it can be effective.
Do you prefer if we were going to increase, or we do it tonight?
Um, I, who, who would, who makes these recommendations, or who, who reviews this particular, the tobacco license for the fee?
That would be between Janine and then the police department.
Okay. And did, and they didn't indicate any, want, any needs to change or anything? Okay.
I don't know that that is, that time-consuming a process for them.
So to keep it simple, Les, you just want it up at twenty dollars or whatnot? If it, if it creates all helter-skelter, get rid of it next year again.
I, you know, I guess I was thinking a whole lot more than twenty dollars.
Oh, I was going to say, we'd have to make it substantial to make it be. Make it worthwhile. When does it become a hindrance to the business? Not.
Yeah, I can look at that, and again, maybe the.
Pass it on to the consumer.
For next year's fees, maybe if staff can look at that snowblow, I mean, there's probably a reason for the snowblowing fee to be more, no, less, a lot less than the, the mowing. And I just don't know what that would be, but we can maybe address that next year. So if anybody, anybody else have any issues on the fees?
I think, you know, we, Les, we've talked about the lawn and, and snow in the past, you know, it's just we have the same offenders every year on this, you know, in the past, and that it, some people just, it's, they get by cheaper by just having us take care of it.
Well, there's thoughts about that, and I, you know, I don't know if that's for tonight or other nights, but, yeah, some just said, it's cheaper to let you guys mow it than for me to be dealing with it.
I think for the future.
So if it's that cheap, then maybe we should make it a little more painful to take care of your property, or get your neighbors to help you, or hire a service, or.
Now, that one I'll support a hundred percent if you want to up this evening, because it is a lot of pain on staff and agony and whatnot, going out to our repeat offenders.
Yeah, I mean, I know.
The goal was when we raised it, make it hurt so they do it.
So, Nicole, just to recap, Nicole, you said for, for the shoveling, it's a fifty-dollar administrative fee, and then I missed the second piece of that.
That's what I see, plus whatever the contract you're charged.
Correct, that's why. Okay, I don't have a specific number.
But that's for the sidewalk snow removal. The mowing of weeds, if I'm reading this right, is a two hundred and sixty-five dollar administrative fee. Is that what we're charging?
Yeah.
Okay. Either way, they both get assessed, you know, and it's still.
If they don't pay them.
If they don't pay it, it's still time-consuming.
Right, but that fifty-dollar administrative fee, that's a pretty good deal, if you think about it, you know, and the contractor's the contractor. That's what they'd be paying anyway if they were contracting for it. So if they have a larger property line or own a couple lots.
Or on a corner.
Or on the corner. And it's really cold, and there's a lot of snow.
Yeah.
So why don't I do this? We'll see if this goes anywhere. I will offer, offer, wait a minute. We're going to waive the consideration of ordinance of series amending.
We're not going to waive.
We're just.
What's that? Roger, how do we do this if we want to increase?
I think you would have to move to amend the schedule with the particular area that you wanted to increase, identifying what the fee is and then the amount to your proposing.
All right, let me try this. So I'm going to offer to amend Section two ninety-nine of the City Code, the scheduling of fees, with the approval as stated, with the exception of the sidewalk snow removal assessment fee to match the, the mowing permit fee of two hundred and sixty-five dollars administrative fee plus the contract mowing cost. Or you want to increase the mowing more, don't you? Increase them both?
Well, yeah, I don't have a problem with increasing them both.
All right, let me back to, change that amount. I'm going to change it to three hundred dollar administrative fee plus contract shoveling costs for both the sidewalk snow removal and the mowing of the weeds. In addition to that, I want to add to my motion to increase the tobacco fee from currently as at one hundred and fifty dollars, and I'd like to change that to two hundred and fifty dollars. See if that goes anywhere.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I'll support them. I, you know.
Neither really are, and we're not looking at making revenue on either one of these. We just want people to.
Get out of the business.
Yeah, especially, and we're not making much on the tobacco fees either, really.
No, and we get the same offenders every year for the snow on the lawn, and, you know, I've been on for seven years.
I think we should look at that strongly every year.
Correct.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Do we need to do a roll call if we're making an amendment to this?
I don't think so. I think it'll just be noted for the second consideration.
Correct. Thank you. Those opposed? Motion is carried. Item number four point four, Ordinance Number twenty twenty-one dash zero four seven, Fifth Series First Consideration for Zoning.
I believe everybody's familiar with it. We approved it a month or two ago, David. I'm going to just conduct the first consideration of the ordinance Number two zero two one dash zero four seven, Fifth Series amending Section nine point zero four of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to the zoning in said city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion is carried. Item number four point five, Service Agreement for New Ulm Bus Route.
Counsel, President, Counselors, MINDOT has approved our bus, our bus route, or having a bus route, and so we were actually fortunate in the timing where they're actually not going to be charging us the typical fifteen percent. They have lowered it to ten percent, so there will be some cost savings there. And we would like to approve this draft contract tonight, barring some language, potential language changes or clarifications from, with, with the City Attorney. And then we'll sign that and send that to the county for their approval. And then that will entail us putting together a joint board between the City and Heartland Express to kind of go over the details of the program, routing, where the stops will be, costs or fee to ride the bus. And so I'll be working with Barb from the, from the county to assemble that group. Once the county approves that, my recommendation would be one counselor, myself, and the city engineer on, on our side to be part of that board to help, help that come to fruition.
Madam President, Counselors, I've spoken with our City Manager about this. I've also communicated with the county attorney. Chris is correct, there are a few changes we'll need to make to the agreement before it could actually be signed. Typically, a city contractor, agreement like this would be signed by the City Manager and the Finance Director, if you direct it, they're authorized to do so. I spoke to them about some of the specific terms, because it doesn't really get into that, and I guess those will be determined through the work of the committee, the representatives of the city and the county. Otherwise, I don't have any issues with the language in the agreement as it's been drafted.
So you'd like the motion to include the City Manager and Finance Director for signing?
That would be appropriate, that they'd be authorized to sign.
Okay.
I guess I have a question. This MINDOT ten percent, is that a one-time fee, or is it a yearly fee?
That is every year, so we're on a two-year, two-year contract for, for having the bus route, and then we can continue it on if we want. And what the county has expressed, or Heartland Express has expressed, is that they've never had to pay that, their share, the ridership. The minute they have a rider, it reduces that, and they've had enough rider since inception to cover that cost. I do not think that's going to be what'll happen to us. I think the very first year, we will owe something, although a little bit less, because we only have to cover ten percent this year. But it's just getting the word out that this is a service. You know, Heartland Express will help us with that, trying to shift some of their riders onto this fixed route. But I think the second year will kind of be that tell on how, how well the bus is going to work in, in our city.
Chris, they'll come back probably in a year with attendance of how many people have used it, or users, you know, whether we had three hundred users, and, and this committee then would look at if we need to adjust locations and times of service?
Yes, so it would be, you know, I think, in the very beginning, we'll meet kind of on a regular basis, and then it'll slowly kind of trickle off when we need to discuss, you know, routing issues or fee issues or anything like that. So it'll always be there to kind of talk about any issues that arise during the time we do have this bus route.
Chris, do they have a plan in place, you know, for like, you know, winter time? You know, if there's a snow emergency, stuff like that? I mean, is there a protocol that they'll put on the radio, or just something like that, or is that just another discussion item?
That's probably another discussion item. I'm sure whatever Heartland Express does when there is winter emergencies and stuff like that will probably be what we communicate and how we communicate and operate that bus during those times.
Yeah, I'm just trying to relay a few questions, because I think we're going to be, it's a learning curve, you know, to going into this, and I think there's no dumb questions, you know, just walking into it and, you know, addressing them one by one, so.
So and I, as I kind of read this over the other day, it really means that Heartland Express runs this bus route, and we are an advisory-type committee.
Yes.
How much say in that advisory committee do we have? If we really wanted route to change, I would assume that they'll listen to us, because it's a New Ulm route, you know? And it was very. And it was very nice when they came to us and they made this proposal six months ago or whatever it was, and I'm looking forward to this joint group working together to make a bus route for our community like we had many years ago, as we learned that we had this and it was very successful. I'm sure our mayor probably remembers the bus route.
No, but my uncle Buddy Sweeney ran the buses from 45 to 55.
Oh, okay.
And it was said at the time that it was a, was a huge asset to the city. Now, we had far less individual cars at that time.
Sure.
But nevertheless, it was said to be a big deal, although he let it go because he didn't make enough money on it.
That's what we're going to find out, so I'm looking forward to this. I support it, so.
Did we have a motion?
Actually, no. I'll authorize the city manager and finance director to execute the service agreement with Heartland Express for a deviated fixed bus route upon final approval of language from the city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 5.1, Report of Claims Paid.
I'll offer motion to accept the claims paid in the amount of $3,665,315 and 11 pennies.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. The New Ulm City Council will go into a closed session to evaluate the performance of city manager Chris Dalton according to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3A and 13D.01 subdivision 3. With no additional business, this meeting is adjourned.